Ashfield Select Board for the purpose of talking about entering into an agreement here. Credits for energy and net metering. There are one, two, three, four recording devices, five. You got Mary's going on there. So there's five audio recording devices and one video recording device. Yep, tonight there's two things on the agenda. This is a special meeting. We originally didn't figure out a meeting this week. So one is to have a public information meeting that has to do with Article 11 of the Annual Town Meeting, which passed unanimously to allow the Select Board to enter into a renewable energy purchase and/or net metering credit purchase agreement, including solar energy and related net metering credits for terms of more than three years, to take all actions necessary to implement and administer such agreements. And that's really the big thing on this, is that it's a 20-year contract, so we have to take it quite seriously. And I think we certainly have done that. So last week, Paulette, you sent our graphs from Donna off to Congress.
Yes.
That was great that they got them back to us so quick. I mean, over the course and so forth.
It was sent in the third, like, sort of, end of day. I thought we needed to be writing it. Yes, that was very good.
No, it was good. Not a lot of changes that I noticed, but you.
Yep.
So, uh...
You got a bunch of changes.
Well, see, mine, I didn't bring up the, uh... Mine didn't come up with the red lines and the stuff. I'm not saying they're not valid changes, I'm just saying, my impression was 50%. I'm just comparing one...
Can I have another again, go right along copy? And go then to Xerox, do it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Let me do that. Do you have one more?
Mine is similar, but mine is printed with all the things that were deleted off to the side so when you read it, because if, when you're looking through it, this goes out, that comes in, so I just printed it in a different fashion, but it still has all the deletions off to the left.
So you take your pick, which one you'd rather...
One or both.
Wasn't that... This one looks like...
Do you want a copy of that one, Ron?
Yeah, sure.
Then I noticed...
It comes right over here.
Right. And then it also printed separate, a couple of pages at the end of big deletions to make it easier to read. But that is just like an extra printed, but everything is here to the right.
What you're making up, you don't have to... I was trying to get it off of this and I was comparing it to what I had, so I was doing it the hard way, obviously.
Show Ron and see if that works for him.
Yeah, I'm sure it does.
So I'll make a copy of this.
Okay. Ron, the other thing I noticed, when I didn't do anything with it, I just wanted to hear if we had to call home, because Jim and Richard Hullen offered to talk through anything that was on here, but I didn't call them back, said we got any specific questions on our behalf, and so we talked. Do you know what's happening? It's a committee meeting upstairs. The other thing I'd like to use is, uh, yes, many of these changes have been accepted by the county so they don't have to, we don't have to worry. Yes, I think they do. Right, right. That's why I started. I figured he knew that's the...
They got a full hour across the street. We're having a great time.
I can be in the booth, I sit here. That sounds good. This is a separate contract, but these are more... Isn't this the contract that they're...
Well, because of Scott, it's not, you know, the primary, it's the now for each one.
Right.
And we continue to.
Right, so isn't this the contract for that? It's a, this is nothing to renew.
Let me write that this one down. We just do again.
Is this the one you're looking at?
Yes.
Yes, that is with us, the Hampshire Council of Governments.
And this is simply to renew our contract that we have now?
This is, uh, it's, my understanding is slightly different, but yes, basically you, uh, you know, the, having the Hampshire Council continue to supply electricity. But there's another piece to it that I sent today, and, you know, when you're ready, I can show you that.
We'll wait for Ron.
Sure.
You're saving energy already?
Trying to stay a little cooler, how's that? It's a good idea, right?
I guess so. I dress warm, figure it's ash, but it would be 10 degrees colder up here.
Well, that hasn't happened for a few weeks.
Normally I always look forward to coming up from the valley at the end of the day, knowing that I feel a definite decrease in temperature coming up through 160. That has not happened.
But this is still running where they're already costing 30. That's all. And that says...
You know, it's 72, or temperature's 72.
Do you have an election coming up on the 11th? Okay, somebody else.
Holly's got one coming up, I forget what, when.
It's just tomorrow, yeah. I bet somebody had one on the 11th.
I guess I lost track, we flew over to Holly now.
Um, Ted White's seat, remember this one?
Oh, they still haven't filled that?
No, they have to do, it's 60 days from his resignation, so even though he resigned for the annual... It was too late to... Actually, he resigned right after the annual.
No, he resigned before.
Oh, okay.
He resigned right after, other special...
That's right. The town clerk and, uh, the net, they were, they're too late to see how they should, you know...
For coffee?
Yeah. We're here, you guys, you just connected, not on this?
It is, it is, it is...
Yeah. Because we got the selectmen coming down the Gashville Lake, and they need to catch up. It's actually right inside of it. Once in Monty, they had an Alcovesco Selectings meeting, you know, like, place, because they had no handicap accessible, um, place within the village, and every summer they did a round robin where they rented each village at Alcovesco. And the D E four man with a wheelchair notified him he was finding them in the 20s. They used up the accessible space. So they had to meet outside, because there was no handicap accessible buildings. It was nice except for the bugs, and a huge can of bugs where everybody, they had shared. What about...
So...
Monty, uh, yeah, in their place.
So those of you that joined us, we've opened the meeting, but I didn't print out the contract that we're going to be talking about, so Ron's making me a copy of that right now. I was, I was just going by what I had, um, as a document on my email here, and it didn't... It doesn't, for whatever reason, plainly show the changes that were made. You just hold with us for a couple of minutes? Thanks for doing that, Ron.
Yep.
All right. So, um, we're having this public information meeting, so we can have one more chance to share information about the contract and the project and what everybody should expect. So, uh, we have representatives from Metzamp and from HCO. So, uh, you have a copy of the latest contract?
Yes, I did.
I'm sorry, your name?
John.
John. Seems though I should be able to get that, uh...
John, I'm right. My middle name. Um, do we like a copy? I only brought two copies, unfortunately.
Okay, well, we've got copies that we just made of that have the latest changes and that sort of thing.
I'm assuming this is the version that Donna...
Okay.
Is this the net metering credit?
We sent that on for a second opinion, the complimentary page, so they made some more changes. You have...
I have not, I assume.
But one of the, his follow-up letter, he said that the changes, the wording that he made, that many of these changes have been accepted by Metzamp previously.
Okay.
We had that discussion last time we were here, that this isn't, this isn't Metzamp's first rodeo, so...
Right, and I think, uh, so this is, this is council, you said?
Right. Complimentary page. Complimentary page for, for second opinion. And our council was on vacation last week.
Right.
We wanted to get this done.
Sure.
We wanted, we wanted to let you know that this was a priority for us. We had not planned on a meeting this week, so this is, this is our sole reason for being here today.
It's you. You want me to do it for her?
Was that...
Should we give him a hard copy, then? Should we get him a little longer?
I can give you this one, she's right now, I have, oh, you love the different ones. It's a different way of track changes, but it's the same document.
So why don't you bring us up to date on, um, what you are with the project?
Sure, so this is, uh, really, the post-net metering contract is really the last critical cap item that we need in order to get this project under the net metering cap, so the utility out here. Because as I conveyed, the last time I was here, that cap is quickly filling as, as the... There's kind of two separate parallel tracks, or the solar incentive program, um, that kind of drives the project financials. That cap has been filled, and the other side of that is the net metering cap whereby the projects find off tickers for the power. Um, that cap is rapidly approaching, and this is what would be critical, that level for this habit project, to which you guys kind of have to be an off ticker, be post-off ticker for that project. I think it's, we're pushing up against slightly uncomfortable territory from my perspective, in terms of getting it under the cap, but if we can, assuming we're open to these changes, and I, if your council says we can reach them in the past, and if we can get something executed in the near term, then we should, I can safely say that the project should get under the cap and can get built this year.
Well, that was our understanding, that's why we're here tonight.
Yep, I appreciate it.
John, I just asked you to state your last name.
Burton.
Burton, sorry. I apologize, I'm sure it's last name.
The, uh, Metzamp didn't have any problems with what you came in with?
No, no, not at all. So we, Donna and I think that did a great job. Two weeks ago now, just prior to America and the election, um, you know, we had a couple of good back and forth edits and a couple of good conversations where she was, we were comfortable with their changes and she was comfortable with our, um, acceptance of all that maybe you wanted. So, um, that's, that's the version she delivered to the town, to Mary, I believe, last, uh, maybe Monday?
Yes.
And, uh, so that's the last version we've seen, but we had no issues. We were, that was, from our perspective, executable.
In the agreement, I propose that the hell, the trigger is when it becomes commercially operating. When, when is that expected to happen?
Assuming that, assuming that, you know, we can get a host signed up quickly to town of Ashford, we're planning on constructing this project and getting it online prior to January 1st, 2014. So we're hoping that this is a 2013 project, and our expectation is that it's a 2013 project. We've, uh, you know, we've gone through, it's a fully permitted project, um, and the last remaining items are signing at the host and then executing the interconnection services agreement, which we, um, but we cannot do that until, until we go on that.
Paulette, any questions for...
Hi, for John.
Actually, I mean, we can specify it a little bit. I would be a bit tense since we all agree this could be...
I was gonna open that for them. I'm assuming it's our decision, but you're all set.
Ron, you have... I'm going through my notes, but I jumped in when, uh, I think it takes a while, it's last week, and I haven't had a chance to, to get it.
Okay.
So I'll be doing that with the public here.
So, so this is a public informational meeting, the reason we're having this. So is there anybody in the audience that has any specific questions for, for Mr. Murphy on Metzamp, this contract, as far as these credits? Anybody at all?
I'm a non-resident, I'm just taking part of a patch from the recorder. I don't know what this whole project is about, is there some number I could call up, contact you with tomorrow, so at least this, on this time, if you're going over what they all know?
Yeah, I'll give you, um, my business, right, but right now, actually, um, you can feel free to contact me directly. I can send over some summary materials as well, if you'd like.
Okay.
My part is, yeah, because this program, there's two parts to this program, one with Metzamp and one with the Hampshire Council, so I can fill you in on...
And you can reach me, because it started with the sewer commission. Oh, okay.
John, are we, uh, I didn't notice in the contract itself, but at some point we're going to need to designate the meters that we want to include on.
That's correct, yes.
And I don't see that as...
It's, it's not, um, you know, it's not a critical back item for the contract and getting the interconnection services agreement executed, but at some point, between the time you're executing, the time the project is online, yes, you have to designate which meters and what, you know, percentage. I mean, we'd be the ones that would help you work through, looking at your utility bills, which we have, and we've worked through, um, which meters should be allocated what. And it's really, it's just a matter of, um, looking at the general percentages each meter takes, and it's not, it's not like, there's no waterfall, really, so it's, you're not risking any meters, you know, by signing up meter A for X amount, meter B for X amount, it's just, as, as you get credits, they're assigned to those meters, so it's not like, if you go over on one meter, you get nothing for those meters. So it's, everything will be utilized and administered.
Well, that's, that's what we, we had discussed last time, but I wanted to restate that.
Yep.
Because certainly the wastewater treatment plant is a huge user, the largest single user, but we've got the firehouse and the town hall and...
Yeah, it's probably scheduled to see, um, in the intertraction services agreement, and that's where you basically have all the possible meters that you want to apply credits against, and we'll make sure that we cover any of the meters in the town that you'd like to receive credits.
And from the data you have, I believe you explained it once before, but just in case somebody else is here that hadn't been there the other time, you had a few meters that you did look at that, from your viewpoint, the next thing looked to be ones we should consider.
Yeah, and, um, as Tom said, it's primarily, oh, you mean additional meters? Yeah, um, you know, I think ideally we include any all meters that Town of Ashford wants to have credits applied towards, as long as, um, those meters are indeed under the same entity, municipal entity, so as long as they're Town of Ashford meters, um, in, you know, at the very top, then we can add them to this.
So we're gonna sneak in one on 332 Main Street.
Depends.
Well, can I discuss the, the Ashfield Water District as another possible meter we want to include?
Yeah, so if, if they are backed by, um, if they're not a separate legal entity, then we can include them. Even if they, even if they are potentially, we can include them if they are backed by, backed up by Town of Ashford. So it's something to look into, certainly.
Well, and what you just stated, they probably aren't, but we'll give it a try, right? I'll even...
Yes.
No.
Exactly.
Betty?
We are a separate public entity. We're, we're not connected through the town at all.
Just to the town buildings.
I mean, we're in the town.
Right.
We provide water to the town, but it's a separate legal entity.
And, yeah, and again, I don't want to dismiss offhand with the possibility right here, so, um, if we can, in the next week or so, determine for certain whether or not it can be provided.
Any other...
Yeah, I'll jump in. We got a couple of small things that we brought up last week, and they're still in this one by complimentary page, so I'm curious, but under termination for default, I mean, can we talk about some specific language so I can better understand what's going on?
Sure, I'll try my best to make it clear, but I'll answer where I can.
Okay, under 10B, it says, it's a, just a couple of sentences. If this agreement is terminated due to the event of default, seller shall have no further obligation to deliver, and buyer shall have no further obligation to purchase net meter credits. And locked in it, continues a little bit further, but I guess my question to you is, in protecting the town's interests, should you guys be held to a standard that's such that if you default, that you should be responsible for providing racks per year to the town? I mean, why, why should we let you off so easy in the event of default?
I believe that that possibility is actually covered, so whoever takes title to, um, in the very small chance that the project would be in a default situation, whoever takes title to the ownership of that project has the responsibility to carry on, um, the responsibilities of this company.
And I guess along those lines, then, just to keep that same thought in your mind, under 10.2B, opportunity to cure default, it says lender shall have the right, but not the obligation, to pay all sums, and it says that they don't have the obligation to step into the seller's position that you guys. So here, for some minute reason, you guys default, and the lender steps in, because the lender's trying to protect their financial interest, but they're not assuming all of the requirements per the seller. That could be an awkward position, you know, I mean, here we're not getting the racks, the lender says, listen, we're not the title owner on this thing. It says that they shall not have the obligation to cure the default of the seller. So it just seems like a point of limbo that needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
And maybe if you want to come back to us with that.
I think... Just confirming that we are indeed working on the same version here.
It's called opportunity to cure default.
10.2B.
It says the lender shall have the right, but not the obligation to pay all sums, sums due from the, well, we have a complimentary page inserted from seller, under this agreement can perform any other act duty or obligation required the seller under the clause to cure default. Where it is, it's a, but not the obligation to pay all sums. Shouldn't we, so it kind of leaves us hanging.
So I believe that that clause is in there, so if it's a scenario where a bank, for instance, takes over, in the case of default, um, you know, where the bank have, where the bank to have a lean on the project.
Yep.
And where they to step in, basically it's saying, well, the bank isn't in the business of operating solar project, and I think all, all these situations where there would be a lender involved are taken care of by the requirements to, um, to have another solar operator step in. I think that's taken care of elsewhere, but I can confirm.
Yeah.
I think these points are all kind of components in here that a potential project financer require, um, but that we handle these types of concerns elsewhere in the contract.
Okay, can you get back to us with where that is?
Absolutely, yeah.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, it's okay.
And then I have one more question that you probably could help me with real quickly, and that, I just had the word confusing by, and that's under net metering 7.3A. If you could just tell me what that means in English, that'd be great. And it is pretty straightforward, but I can't get my mind around it. It talks about the 10 megawatts, and then it is increased by a physical...
Yes, okay, sure.
You said net metering 7.3? I just said confusion.
So, 7.3A, that section?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so basically, the, the law is, requires that, um, a municipal entity can have no more than 10 megawatts of net metered solar and net meter renewable technology, um, in their name. So this is basically a way to, it's a declaration that, um, under... So this is basically a way to, it's a declaration that, under these laws, that because Town of Asheville is a municipality or other governmental entity, that they agree not to go over that 10 megawatt limit.
And how high will we be?
This is, this is less than 10%.
Yeah.
Six percent.
So once that 10 megawatt thing changes, and then we can...
That's right, exactly. And that would only change northward, I would say, if anything, get smaller, just because there are already a number of either towns or other municipal entities that are above near that cap of 10 megawatts.
Okay. That was, if you could give back to Mary at some point on where we would see that done, ownership of the project being, and if we fall, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
How do we process this, though? If I can ask, he's got to take this back. Mary, you need to send this, I would assume, electronically to them so that they can take issue with it or agree with it?
They don't have Copeland pages.
No, no, and I have no, what, what, what would you like?
Well, it makes sense to me that they get visual copy of these track changes, so they can accept it or reject it, right? The modifications, do they?
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't clear if the board was going with this copy as a final copy, or the copy from Town Council as a final copy. I know you had negotiated, had conversations with Town Council, and I think I see some things back in K and P that perhaps you had talked to Town Council about, and so maybe open some of that up again, which should be...
Well, I, I find the, not looking at the redline version that you made copies for me, is that I found the Copeland page, it's wordier, but it is certainly easier for me to understand. I mean, my favorite part, I think, is, is section 13. It identifies us from about everything under the sun, as far as I can tell, including maybe the sun going out.
So I guess the question is, because we had Town Council talking directly to Nexamp, and they did some back and forth to get the contract, as I understand it, there were maybe things that were asked for, that we agreed to, some things that were not agreed, so do we want, does the board want to put this contract in front of them now as a stand alone to approve or not approve, and if there are changes to be negotiated, should that be directly between?
We got to pick somebody. We got to pick somebody to do this, to do this work.
Who do you want? Richard Holland from Copeland Page to be your contact person, since he made those changes? To discuss that with him? We can always get back to Donna, but it would be hard to ask Donna to...
Go back to your first opinion for a third opinion, right?
Right. But I'm, well, and, that's just my opinion.
I tend to agree.
Richard, I mean, I, I'm not making an argument on either the other. I think what we need to do is get this executed.
Right. And if she has had history, is it a she?
It said Richard Holland.
Okay, Richard, if he's had experience with Nexamp, why not? Yeah, we talked about this three months ago, we agreed on it, you know, this is...
Has he had experience with Nexamp?
He has.
With net metering?
No, no. A lot of them, they've already approved, so I mean, just Donna, you know, speak to that.
I want them to be able to talk. I mean, they had offered, they said, if you have any questions, and which really they liked, then have them talk directly. Then we can get back to you if there's some issues or not.
Who would, John, who is it at your, who is it at your office that handles this?
A combination of myself and John Abe. My concern is that, looking at these redlines, without, you know, having a chance to really forward them right now, my concern would be that, at the very least, we would have to get it back to our council.
Sure.
And, you know, just given the time pressures, obviously we'll prioritize and get it done as soon as possible, as you guys have done. I'm just concerned that if there are significant changes here, that we could be pushing this to...
Are those redlines from Donna?
No.
This is that much from Copeland?
That's, that's, red lines off of Donna's page, I believe.
Right. But if they, if they were innocuous enough, John, what if someone in Copeland Page was used to dealing with your attorney, contract attorney, had already done the battle over this, and said, listen, we agreed to these things on this other time?
Sure, and if that's the case, then...
Yeah, it's just, you know, the question is, do they put more in here?
Right. And I'm not familiar enough with our dealings with Copeland Page in the past. I certainly wasn't involved in whatever, whatever contract may have been negotiated, either on our behalf, not on our behalf, but on another municipality's behalf. So that gives me a little bit of pause, but I think, assuming they are innocuous enough, we can certainly turn this around very quickly. I'm just, again, slightly concerned that there may be something in here that I'm not catching right now.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I don't think anybody would ask you to say, let's do it, let's sign it, let's go. And I don't know that we're necessarily in that position, although my sense is, on the board is that we're anxious to get this done, and we, am I correct, Paula? I mean, we're anxious to get this done before we're out.
Right, and if he can turn it around quick enough, we meet again next Monday.
We meet again next Monday.
Okay.
So we have, we have a week to, to drill it out.
Here's one potential path forward that I think, I'd like to hear your feedback on, but something we spoke about my, our management today, is that what we really need, as everyone is aware, is to get a host customer signed up for this project. And to that extent, it's possible that we could amend either one of these contracts to be a one-year contract, with the stipulation that the final amended version will be executed within 30 days. That's just one potential scenario. In the interest of getting this signed as soon as possible, so I don't, first of all, I don't know what that timeframe would be from your perspective, but if you think that means we could get it executed in the next couple of days, we could execute a one-year agreement, and then give ourselves a week or two to iron out the details of whichever agreement we choose, that's one path forward that I think the utility would give a sample approval on, is us having a host customer sign up.
In terms of whichever contract, at this point, as we sat here, I thought we were agreed as a board that we were going forward with the markup from Copeland Page, so to me, I wouldn't think likely we're going to say, oh, forget that, now go back to the other one. We're progressing forward, not just having options.
Sure.
That's not, that's not what I heard him say.
Oh, then I misunderstood.
No, it was, it was basically, we agree on whatever contract that you guys agree on, I would assume that is Copeland Page, we could amend this rather than to be a 20-year agreement. We'd make it a one-year agreement, and from that point, give ourselves two or three weeks to finalize all of these redlines. So it's, it's just a way to get the project signed up as soon as possible, with the understanding that the contract will be finalized and amended if needed. It's possible that we could just say, yes, this is okay, and send it back to you tomorrow, but just on the off chance that's not...
I'm open to that proposal, but I think our attorney and your council need to hammer that out.
Sure.
And first, we've got to figure out exactly what wrinkles are in it that need to be ironed out.
Absolutely.
And...
Yeah, I just want to put on the table as an option.
I mean, what, what, what's your feeling?
I, I kind of can imagine the pressure you're under, and the pressure we're under, to get this thing executed. I just want to make sure that the town is protected on that one-year contract, so that one of these other towns doesn't just slide in there, you know, and we're left with nothing. I can't imagine that would be the intent, but it does sound like possibly that if your attorney looked at this and said, yeah, I can see my way through that problem with some time, you know, 30 days or something, and we needed to, you need to get your financing lined up, and get all your caps taken care of and everything, and we rely on Donna's contract to get us there, that sounds like a workable solution. She'd probably have to add something in there that says something like, all good effort will be made to work together, build this into a 20-year contract or something, to keep us duty-bound to each other.
Yeah, it would have to be an amendment.
But I'm open to almost anything. We did go to Copeland Page because they seem to have a little more knowledge in this area, and so we tend to be leaning in this direction.
You just referred to Donna, but wouldn't we just have Copeland Page at this point work with us to execute this?
I'd be fine with that, too, but what they might say is, they might end up in a, in too much of a distance between each other, and, and the intention is to get this one, Copeland Page, one agreed to, but I don't know if they can come to terms free for a one-year contract, because there's so much change here, you know?
That would be ideal. If they wanted more time, agreed to the Copeland Page one for one year, and now let's go back. What is it that you really do want to agree to for 20 years or something?
Yeah. So even, that way you're not dealing with two attorneys, right? Two lawyers, you're dealing with one.
In a perfect, in a perfect world, I'd like the attorneys to iron this all out, and next Monday, we sign a contract and it's off our table.
For 20 years.
We've got plenty of other things to do, and don't make the, if it does have an extension to renegotiate it, don't make it too narrow, because we really are thinking that we would like to meet every other week here for a month or six weeks or so. But I think it would be in everybody's best interest to get it out of the way, and we're, we're here in particular to do this, to get this done.
Yeah, because the, the risk is real that, you know, at a certain point, and it's not very far from now, if you're going to execute a contract, and execute by, and say the project does not qualify, and it won't get built, so I just want to convey a visit, it's very real risk from our perspective, and I know everyone is aware that, that that's our position, and so whatever, whatever we can do, exactly, whatever we can do to facilitate the most workable solution in the near term, that's what we, we'd like to pursue.
So let me clarify, take back what I said. I, I agree with Tom, that if we can get this thing signed next week as it is, that's perfect, but it's not a perfect world out there, and if Copeland Page comes up with a workaround for a year on this, or, you know, a 30-day to, and it would be for a year period to meet your obligations, but it would be, it would hold us to a 30-day sort of hammering out session of this, but I think you're hearing a willingness from the board.
Sure.
Can there not be a motion that the board agrees to sign pending final whatever from Copeland, and then he drives up and you sign it? You have to be at a meeting to sign paperwork?
I, I really think something that has this kind of, carries this kind of weight for as long as we were talking about, and I, and it's just Mike, and one on the board, is that I think, I think it's all right to keep the heat on, and let's iron it out, and put a little pressure on, let's get this done. There's, you don't want to revisit it in 30, 60, 90 days.
Yeah, we're, we're the same page there.
You want to be pouring concrete and putting up solar panels.
If this contract were all signed, besides deciding at some point down the road what meters are going to be involved in the net metering this contract, what other items are left to negotiate? Is it the rate? It seemed to me that, you know, there was jokes about what that would be, but to the best of my knowledge, have we really solidified that, or do we have some direction we never had?
Yeah, I think, so 27% in this territory is significantly higher discount than we've ever offered. My feedback is that it's really not something we can push back much on, just talking to our financing parties and our investment committee, but, you know, were that, were that a critical item for you to see percentage to discount more, something we could go to them with? And again, it's, it's just another potential week to add on to the processes. The feedback was that 27% is probably the highest we could go, and if I wanted to really push back on our financing partners, I'm sure that we could, yeah, probably one or two percentage points more.
May I say something?
Sure.
So I just want to mention that, now I'm the National Council of Governments, and in our process, because at some point, we've had as a goal, because we've been supplying electricity for a number of years, and we had as a goal to make our supply of electricity more local and more green, and this is a way that we could do that, but we couldn't do that on our own, so we went out and were looking for a partner for this kind of arrangement. And we've had an RFP process, we've had a number of solar developers present proposals to us, and we met with a number of companies, and, and we had a number of criteria that we used, and I haven't listed here, but I'll point this out here. We're looking for a Massachusetts-based company, we're looking for a company that was vertically integrated, because we're our criteria, that can do from design to permitting to construction, all of that maintenance, Massachusetts-based financing, experience, Massachusetts has a great track record, and, and a company that offers the best discount to our customers. And we started out here with the 21%, and that is very good for Waukanoa Territory, and the fact that we're talking 27 here is pretty amazing, and so I just wanted to put that in perspective. And a lot of developers weren't even offering this kind of arrangement for Waukanoa Territory, it was just national grid, so I just wanted to offer that as, as information.
Yeah, just to add to that is, the only reason we're near 27% is because of we're smaller than the usual overall deal size, you know, we're, so we can, on a weighted average basis, we can afford a little more, but again, we're picking up against the very...
Some of them's...
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the board at all? All right, well, thank you for coming in. I, I would hope that, I bet within hours, if not moments, that this copy will be forwarded to your email, and, and then your council can contact the counsel, Richard Holland at Copeland Page.
So it sounds like at the very earliest, we would have, execute the contract to be a week from today, is that correct?
I will come prepared.
Okay.
So that would probably be the only change, I mean, there'd be changes, but one change that I would like to see, since, especially if we can buy the might and the will of everybody wanting to work together, that we can execute a 20-year contract?
Yes.
I'd like to have a space for all three of the selected contractors to sign.
Okay.
Everybody's name needs to go down. Everybody's name needs to go down. Let's put it on that one.
Fair enough.
All right, any other... HCO, can we... This competitive supplier contract, while you're here.
Yes. Actually, I came with an updated version, and let's see. Look, and I had copies there, and that's still...
Is this the same one you have here?
It's almost the same, except for one little section, and there's this...
So they have the one that you sent earlier today?
The one that I sent earlier today is also changed because there was a piece from you that went into the other one, so I'm...
I can track them.
Yeah, you track them. There. And show me what for the changes. And there's a section... I'll read it. Section six, where you said renewal.
Section six?
No, section, is it section six? Six. I'll see, well, of the old one, never mind. Well, one-six, the four, has been transferred onto this other one here.
Jeff and Ross.
Jeff and Ross? Well, the old, the old version.
Here's the old version.
The old version, if you look at file number six.
Renewal.
Renewal.
The contrary to renew.
This here was transferred on to this here.
This notice will renew for three additional five-year terms unless either party notifies the other of its intent to terminate the agreement at least 60 days before the end of each term. So what this is doing is this is making this overlap with the 20 years for the solar.
So the waiver, it's always been, it's 20 years, the contract is 20 years, next year, and five years to start, five years for the Hampshire Council, and with an optional renewal of, you know, of blocks of five years each time. And so that's what that document talks about. And then the other one is the specifics of the electricity contract, because when you sign up for the first five years, then you don't necessarily... We won't necessarily give you a five-year supply contract. You can break it up into one-year contracts, five-year contracts.
Because you're going out to bid on it.
We're going out to bid, exactly. So you can break it up the way you want, and so that thicker document is that part of it. But that other one is just specifies that you're entering into an agreement to do business with us as your supplier for a period of five years, and that after the first five years, you have the option to continue for another block of five years, and...
How often does HCO bid this out? Do they bid out the electricity, weekly, monthly?
We will be doing, well, the thing is, you have been real-time customers, and real-time has been great since we started in terms of having stayed, our customers, a lot of them. There's been some changes last, in the winter, that made it so bad, and it's complicated, but anyway, made the electricity market a lot more volatile than it's been, and so we are now working with wholesale suppliers and getting ready to enter into agreements with them to be able to offer fixed pricing as well. And so we will be going out to bid, I'm not the one who does that, but depending on, you know, what seems best at the time. So sometimes one year's better, sometimes 18 months, 24 months, and with this, you'll have flexibility within those five-year period to decide which way you want to go, how short or how long a contract, you do that.
Well, it says we got five years.
Yeah.
It's a five-year contract.
Five years with us as supplier, but you don't have to have, we have the option within that five years to go with five one-year contracts, or 18-month contracts, or one one-year and one two-year, you know, like that, up to five years.
What, how long has Ashfield been engaged?
Oh, did I see that?
The 90s.
The 90s?
I don't know.
Oh, we've been supplying electricity since 2006, I believe, so...
For Ashfield or in general? I thought there was something that went back further, not the solar program discounts.
The bolt bind. The bind and electricity.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it's 2006, 2006.
Well, in that time, we were talking about seven years.
Yeah.
What's the average discount that the town is seeing here?
I think I might have had that information some time ago, and let me see if I have that in my notes. I know the first time, he bet I came with that information, but not today, I wasn't quite there for that, but let me take a look.
I'd be all right if it's not, you know, if it's not 15.4, and you said it's what percentage or something, you know, if you get to be in the neighborhood.
I wouldn't probably have a percentage, but I would have a dollar figure. And that, if, you know, I could get that number for you pretty easily tomorrow, I could just, you know, because you can have that available.
Yeah, that would be, that would be a big piece of information.
All right, because as I said, this year, this past winter was really hard, and that's why we're looking at, traditionally, traditionally, we had saved, well, our customers, we have about 100, over 100 customers, and we'd save over a million dollars to our customers with the real-time product, but, you know, a while back, it was significantly, significantly more than that, and because last winter was so bad. And so, and then they said to you, "We are, we are really looking to..." Because we think that that goal is going to continue to exist, and so we want to be able to offer consistently, you know, solid pricing to our customers, so we're looking at also offering...
So the problem is what, availability or...?
Well, a combination of things, and I'm probably not the best person to explain it, but a lot of, it had to do with natural gas, and because the price of natural gas had been low, a lot of people started using natural gas for their variety of things, but also power plants, and so there's more, there's been more demand for gas, and with combination of Hurricane Sandy and some of the, some of the pipelines being destroyed, and also generally speaking, the pipelines were only this big, and now there's more demand for gas, and now here in New England, we're sort of at the end of the pipeline, so there was restrictions, contrition, not allowing as much as we could, so the prices as a result went way up. And so, and we don't think that those are going to be fixed, you know, the problem's not going to be fixed necessarily anytime soon, so we anticipate similar problems for the coming years, and so, anyway, so that's, we're trying to address that by offering other products. And, you know, I mean, that's not just true of the Hampshire Council, that's true of anybody supplying electricity, that's just been the nature of the, of the beast, yeah. So in a nutshell, that's the problem. Yeah. So I will maybe note...
Yeah, so how soon do you want this contract signed?
This, you know, maybe we can do that next week as well, on Monday.
Well, it gives time to review it.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And how many communities participate?
Um, you know, we've had some school districts that have signed contracts, we have, you know, because this is, this applies to any municipal entity, no matter if it's a school district, so there have been some school districts, and maybe one district or two or three, as well.
Well, it's a lot of school districts and...
And then just...
Right.
And so I think the town of, am I in the... Barry?
Yeah.
So...
Barry, and I, who's at, I don't know, I think, I mean, we're in talks with dozens and hundreds of customers who already have under, which...
That would be, that would be information that would be just, you know...
Are you talking about Hampshire?
I'm talking about Hampshire. This, no, no, not from that, this, this contract.
Oh, we have a whole bunch, oh, yeah, okay, oh, yeah, okay.
I want to know if we're in a kayak or we're on a cart or a boat.
Okay, so you want to know other towns that are Hampshire's power customers? I might even have this right here, and we also have ratings for Ashfield.
Just for clarification, since we were talking with Dexan.
Right.
Signing this contract gets reduced rate for whom? In town?
These, this is for municipal accounts.
Just municipal accounts?
The same, there's like two parts to this program, Hampshire Solar.
Is it possible to see if it can be extended as well to the water department in some way? And he's got her hand up.
I already talked to Jeff when I provided him with the information.
Okay. So you're already...
And we're sort of, we had already talked about four, and then we happened to be here, so I talked to him about the others here.
Right. Oh, here we go, I have a list right here of Hampshire power customers. The towns, Adam, Ashfield, nope, Ethel, Barry, Belcher Town, Berniston, Brookfield, Buckland, Charlemont, Chesterfield, Clarksburg, Colrain, Conway, Covington, Dalton, Deerfield, East Brookfield, East Hampton, Edgemont, Irving, Gill, Goshen, Grandee, Granville, Hadley, Hatfield, Peak, Holland, Hubbardstine, Pundysden, Middlefield, Melbourne, New Braintree, New Salem, New Brookfield, Northfield, Palmer, Pelham, Peterham, Queenfield, Richmond, Shelburne, Shrewsbury, Southampton, Stockbridge, Sturbridge, Wales, Ware, Warren, Warwick, Wendell, West Hampton, and New York.
Fifty-four.
And, and then there...
A bunch of schools.
There's the State Agency, which is Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, then there are some independent school districts and other regional school districts, it's all listed here.
Is Mohawk on that list of schools?
Uh, Mohawk, no, I'm not seeing it here.
That's good information, but do you send that in an email?
Would you like me to send this to you?
That'd be great.
Sure, I will do that, yeah.
That'd be good, fine. Ron, do you have anything to ask for Ed?
Yeah, just, I'm a little confused as to, this, this one that was superseded that we've done earlier today.
Yeah.
Was this one that we signed earlier, five years ago, or something like that?
You know, I asked, I asked Jeff, who is our sales and brokerage person, and I asked him if that was the contract that had the use, you know, and he said, "It's very similar, he just made some minor changes according to him." So it's probably very similar to that.
And then my question, I must have missed why, but you have a contract and you have a notice of intent, and the renewal was taken out of the contract to put into the notice of intent. What was the reason for doing that?
Well, because, well, you know, how Hampshire Solar works is that there's, you know, you buy in, or you sign a contract for the original five years, and that is the part that renews. In terms of the other part, if we offer a rate of whatever, seven cents, eight cents per kilowatt hour, and, and, you know, we go out to bid, and we don't know what we'll be able to offer, whether the price is going to be lower or higher or what, so if, you know, we can't say that that's going to renew because we don't know what the price is going to be, and that's why it was a rule...
But isn't that prices? That's prices.
Those are prices.
Renewal, which went from the contract to the notice of intent, renewal seems like standard boilerplate stuff.
I think so, yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out why someone made that change.
Well, you know, I don't know, because I didn't write those contracts, but I know today, when I was preparing to come here, I said, "Hey, let's look at these contracts together because I want to be ready to answer questions," and we went over them, you know, and we noticed that, and said, "Whoops, that was put the wrong, you know, in the wrong, it should not have been in that contract, I should have put it on the other sheet," so we did the switch.
Today.
Today.
I guess my question to you, Tom, is, do you feel comfortable enough with this being similar to one that we've signed in the previous cycle, which is to sign it the way it is? And do you think we should float this file?
I, I'm pretty comfortable with it, I mean, I don't believe anybody's trying to pull anything on anybody else, but if it happened accidentally, but I think we could pull out one of the past contracts and just compare it, the most recent contract and just compare it.
Okay, and we could...
Yeah, it might be easier for them to provide us with the one that we signed rather than us to go through.
Sure, we know that, yeah, okay.
And you could even, you could even note whatever changes are there.
And send it to all of us, because then we can gather...
Send it, send it through our select board at Ashfield.
Right. So select board at Ashfield.
Board.
I will do that.
That'd be great, hopefully we can, hopefully we can take care of both of these burdens with one stone.
Exactly.
He goes to the three, four members, and the company goes to Mary and uses that email address.
Oh, okay, all right.
It forwards it out to everybody.
Automatically, all four of you, okay, we'll do that.
Dr. Hope, I'm taking a warrant here, I'm just looking, just now looking at some of these revisions, and some cause concern, a lot of, you know, significant concern where I think it's...
John?
Yes.
Our counsel, identify the wrinkles, and let's work to iron them out.
Fair enough, I just want to be clear that I think, given the number of items that stand out to me already, just looking at this, just want to be clear that it's possible we may have to, in the interest of getting this project under the cap and getting it built, we may have to go with Plan B if we can't immediately agree to these, so I just want to put that on the table for a moment.
I mean, there, there are changes in there.
Yeah.
How huge they are, I have no idea, there's no sure and handle, or they're ever...
And there's a few that's basically rendered, in my opinion, into an off contract, so...
So you can have the two lawyers talk to each other, right? We're not going to be in between us, they can...
They can. So our counsel and Copeland, so the company's authority is basically, as if it's null.
And we can, we can communicate to Mr. Holland.
Okay.
That's good, we want to make it work.
Yeah.
Anything else? Not wasting a lot of energy running air conditioning here tonight, or fans either. Our next meeting is next Monday, unless there's any other business that we have on the agenda for tonight. Oh, mail, mail, we got a open meeting law complaint form. Kachina, Uriah, uh, date of the alleged violation, June third. Is there, is there a, is there a letter that goes with this, or just a complaint? Oh, it's on the back, I'm sorry, I need to flip it over.
I have you, the lady with the page, can I have you send your names just for the record?
Sure.
My name is Anne Renee LaBouch, I can give you this as far.
I'm pretty sure you said it once before, but I know all the recorders are going, so.
Thank you so much.
Did you give one over there to the people who record the minutes, right?
That'd be great. Send it on to Donna?
I think at the very least, we should get an extension if we don't plan to discuss it. Typically, it'd be my suggestion to have Donna do it as she did the last one, with her signature as I represented.
We've already made adjustments to minutes.
Right, subsequently.
Subsequent to that.
Wouldn't it be good if we double-checked our records and talked about it next week, since she's referencing January sixteenth, which is a set of minutes we just recently approved? What if, I mean, I can't imagine she wrote this without thinking there's a error of some kind on our part.
I'm really having a hard time understanding what she's asking for in the discussion. I mean, we already went back and amended one set of minutes.
Well, isn't she.
And that was, that was according to the, uh.
Isn't she saying she had an appointment with us on the sixteenth, and our minutes do not reflect that?
And that was our reason for meeting with her again in April?
Um, no.
So that March, that was in March.
And if we have, I mean, between January sixteenth and we're approving minutes on June third, if we have somehow erroneously not included her in the minutes, it would be easy enough to go back and listen, review notes, whatever it takes, and make amends. If that's how she's looking for us to correct.
My move that we ought to collect the information that Kachina's referring to, forward it to Town Council, come up with a plan, and, and move on from there. We've got, um, our agenda's full, we've got a lot of projects going on, a lot of things to do. And it seems like about every six weeks, we have to revisit some old set of minutes that didn't get approved in a timely manner, and, uh, we just got to figure out how to handle it. And hey, I got caught last time because I said it, it wasn't, I didn't feel it was reform to go back and amend minutes that had already been approved. Then I was asked to do it by Town Council and, uh, as a reply to a charming general, so, uh, I think, uh, that would be my motion, is to, to, uh, have the administrative assistant just pull that information together that's referred to, forward it to Donna McNichol, and, um, come up with.
A response.
A response.
I'll second that.
More discussion.
Just trying to make sure I understand, when you say pull together, to, what do you anticipate sending to Donna McNichol to have her tell us what?
The meeting minutes on all those dates that she's referring to.
And subsequent dates.
And agendas, maybe.
A lot of the information she's referring to, dealt with in other meetings too, right?
And what about the sixteenth? Which is where she starts. And that's where she's saying that she had a meeting with us, and there's no mention of her at all in the minutes.
That's the reason, that's, that's the reason why we had the meeting when she came in and described that to us in either February or March. Matter of fact, it was two different sessions, I believe. One was, I think they were both in March, and it was, um, she came in and couldn't tell us really, and I told her to go back and write something up, so I could include that.
But it can't be because of those minutes, because we didn't approve these minutes till June third. So somehow, we made some mistake of some kind with those January sixteenth minutes. And it couldn't be part of your discussion with her because we had the.
Well, January sixteenth is probably the, January sixteenth minute and a lot of minutes before that is they weren't approved within ten or fourteen days.
Right.
That's the problem with the minutes. Just like two weeks ago, when we finally approved minutes that were sixteen months old. We're getting caught up on some of those. So there's got to be a game plan. We make every good faith effort to get caught up with these minutes and make them as accurate as we can, no doubt, uh, having to place volumes into the Library of Commerce.
Well, if we send this off to Donna, see what she suggests, maybe she suggests the same thing Paul had, as just expressed, so.
Very well.
Get it out there, and I would suggest we get an extension automatically, you know, boom, get another week or so, so that one happens at the time clock.
That's a good idea, since we're trying.
If you want to amend your motion to include an extension for.
I would accept that as a final amendment.
And then let's talk about it the next meeting, look at her response.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining.
I'm not comfortable with this.
Have any further?
I'm not comfortable, because I understand why you want to send it out to Council, but we're kind of making costs, and then if all we need to do is make an amendment to the meeting minutes, we could do that ourselves, it'll save the expense. If we've made an error, it's easy enough to fix.
Yeah, I really feel that we've, we've tried to do everything that we can do, and if we make an adjustment here, it automatically ends up being another adjustment, and, and I may be wrong, I mean, I, I was very well informed last time when we had to go back and make amendments. My, my first reaction is no, but, um, I'm, I'm not comfortable with going back and adding things to minutes when I wasn't here.
Well, Ron, I, I'll go no, I, I think we could save the expense on this and make these corrections. It's only two minutes, and we could do research and make the amendment ourself, the motion passed, so that gets.
The only other thing that I have that I want to bring up is that we have been working together for five months, with one election in between. And I want to have a little discussion of what people should expect from me as far as communications when we're not in the meeting. Okay? So I don't reply to hardly any emails. But if you want to reply from email amongst us, if there's something to be brought up, to be discussed, do it through the server.
Do you isolate for Ashfield?
Yes, because, and I'm sure it was, uh, an accident, but you asked me to add things to the agenda, which I didn't get, by the way, until two o'clock in the morning on the fourth, so.
Right, because you had approved it, and Mary said she was gone, so.
So, so, but you sent that from your email to my email?
Correct.
And that is a guarantee no response from me. And probably if it goes through the server, it has a slim chance of a response. But those sorts of things. As far as adding it to the agenda tonight, we, we went through a lot of discussion to say how narrow-focused we're going to keep this meeting, so. Even if I had gotten it earlier, I, I didn't think that was fair, because we've also changed the date of next week's meeting to accommodate, we're on vacation, so we can add it to that agenda.
So you'll add it to next week's agenda, okay.
But I just, I just want to make it clear what people should expect from me. You, you all right for that, Ron?
I just go through Mary, I don't talk to you at all. So I go through Mary, say I'd like to get on the agenda, if she says yes, it goes on, if she says no, it doesn't, that's it.
But yeah, I, I don't set that, you know, I, I don't want anything to ever be construed as a deliberation that isn't where it should be. Because that's, that's what's been drilled into me in the last five months, where things used to be so easy.
When you get select word in Ashfield dot org, it must go to some email, they get farmed out. I mean, Ron gets one, I get one, you get one, so it goes to some.
I can tell if it came through the server, so it's part of the public record.
Gotcha, that's okay, fine, I just knew that you were the only one to approve it, it was new, and if the change was going to happen, Mary was not.
Well, I can accept that it was, that it was an oversight, but I just, I just don't want people to expect something that I have no intention of doing.
It's okay.
It's going directly like that.
I have just basic stuff that you guys have asked me to do, and can I just hand it out?
Sure.
When is the Mohawk Trail original, um, school district, long-range planning committee minutes? So if you could pass those down, they really can be discussed anytime, but don't need to be either, I'm just trying to keep you impressed with what's going on.
This is the one when we said they had a committee, they wanted to form, and they said, let's put Ron on it.
Yes.
So those are the, those, and then last week, you asked me to reach out to Donna with the field, the field issue, to get a quote as to confirming the road.
Yes.
There, before we contracted, so you guys have the package already, so I gave you just the cover sheet, but for the record, I've included the same backup material to Donna.
Yeah, sure.
And, um, she is a receipt of that, and Alvin Gray is a receipt of a copy of it also, because he's so, he's well-informed on this, because I wanted to get her moving on it, so that we can get a quote back, so that we can keep this thing alive. So just, it's information. This is for the folder, Mary, just to, I might want to make it a document, basically, but it's the exact same package that I've been handing out, with accessory information and sketches and stuff.
Not to overload you, Ron, but last week, we talked about doing some work on.
Easy, that was going to happen this week.
That's fine, that's fine, I just wanted to keep.
I wanted to get this behind me first, because it seemed to be a little more schedule-driven, and I knew she got back today, so I wanted to get that in.
Monday night, I should have that from Highway three, Josh.
Oh, okay.
For the, for the book.
Okay.
That should be expected.
Can, can.
Because then we, we want that back.
Yes.
First of all.
So that we can start from here, figure out from this board to get it back, or no?
Yes.
Is there any way for us to make a one-week appointment, so Ricky can participate this Wednesday at our meetings, since the finance committee, and then do the full, next week?
That was the message of the bird, Perry, that was the finance committee to have a problem. Do you have a problem with that?
I don't have a.
And do officially next week, but that way she can participate.
Why don't we do it right now?
Well, I know it was not on the agenda, I was trying to add something.
Not reasonably, uh, anticipated by the chair. I'll make a motion to appoint Ricky Carroll, which finance committee leads on to the personnel board.
I'll second that.
It's a three-year term?
No.
To 2016?
Is that a one-year term?
No, then we were doing almost three.
Or as long as she's on the finance.
Or as long as she's on the finance.
If the resignation, somebody else. I second, or would you second?
Second. We've got all kinds of seconds for this one one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
What's the German, eight twenty-seven? Now, what's your German, so move. Second it, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
World record speed.